Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board meeting for December 4, 2018. It's a little after seven o'clock. And the first item on the agenda is the Master Plan Steering Committee update, but we don't, haven't had a Master Plan Steering Committee meeting between today and the previous meeting, so there's no update required. The next agenda item doesn't start until 7:15, so in the interim, we can take up other business. We have some minutes which Michelle has had the opportunity to review.
Yes.
And has provided any changes that she may have.
Yes, so the two sets of minutes you have in front of you are the August minutes that have everyone's changes, the, I emailed them like an hour before the meeting, but I mean, I know you have the red lines, various red line versions, but what's in front of you, the August minutes have the comments on the, from Carrie, Teresa, Michelle, I think Amy, I think Amy did the changes right at the very beginning. And then you had also asked for Fred to double check the information that was around the drainage comments and so forth. So, so some of that has been, you know, edited as far as corrected, and then some of it, we took out a couple of sentences that just didn't, they were sort of out of context, they didn't, they didn't work in the big picture.
Right, okay.
So, that set that you have in front of you has everyone's comments in it. And then the second set is you have November minutes, and the Amy, Michelle, and Carrie just had some very minor edits to those, and those edits were made. There was more of, you know, more like corrections, you know, spelling of things.
Okay. The November minutes at the top say November Planning AP.
Oh, yes, they, I forgot to take the AP off, because they, they were, they have, they have AP, they, um.
Oh, oh, got it. Now I know what that is. That's you. Now I get it.
If everyone doesn't do it off one kind of Word document, I end up with like two or three versions of it.
Right.
As to who made the changes. So, just ignore the AP, I just forgot to take that off.
Okay, all right.
But I didn't notice that before I came up here. I, I printed the ones that said AP, but it has everyone's changes in it.
Okay. Anthony, have you had a chance to review these?
I have.
Okay, do you have any edits or changes that you want to make? I noticed that Kathy didn't say you had any changes, so I just wanted to make sure.
No, I mean, if, if there were things that you guys caught that I missed, then so be it.
Okay, so you're satisfied then, at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any discussion for either of these sets of minutes? No? Somebody want to make a motion for the August minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the August 21st meetings for the Planning Board.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Aye, okay, great. All right, and now we've got the November 14th minutes. Any further discussion on those minutes? Does anyone know you could, you said you guys are good? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion on that?
I make a motion that we approve the November 14th meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those are done. You have some A&amp;Rs you want signed?
Yes, both of these A&amp;Rs relate to property on Bartlett Street owned by the Gutierrez Company. So, one of the A&amp;Rs, actually, I think it's two pages worth, I mean, it was spread out onto two pages, two, two sheets. The Marlboro Planning Board also has to sign it, because the property, you've already approved the site plan, the building, I don't think it's under construction yet, but soon will be, but that's the one that comes off of Hayes Memorial, so the address is a Marlboro address, you go through Marlboro, and then the building and parking area is in the North Row.
Right.
And then the second A&amp;R is, and actually, I'll come around to you, so I'm not, I don't hold my back to the camera, but the second A&amp;R is, again, the site plan, you've all approved, that is across the street on Bartlett Street. It used to just be called Zero Bartlett Street, it's the Gutierrez parcel next to the FedEx site, and.
That sits between FedEx and Cedar Street?
Yes, yes. And, so again, you've all approved a site plan there, and they, they're building two buildings there, so the, they're splitting it up. Originally, they were just going to keep the two buildings on one lot, but whether it's, I don't know, financing or, so those buildings are being split, so they have an address of, one has an address of 330 Bartlett, and the other one has an address of 350 Bartlett.
Okay.
So, these, you can all sign them, or just one sign them. This is the Hayes Memorial. Let me just, it's actually on three sheets.
Three sheets, I see.
Yep, yep, yep. And, so this is, it starts, that, this is the, this one's, starts on Hayes Memorial. This is the town match line, and then this is the property, part of the property, and then, again, it goes, just the scale that we require it to be at, it goes across three sheets. So, and then, so one set, you know, stays with us, one set goes to the registry. So, if.
Do you guys want to sign? I've signed a bunch of these.
The, and then same thing on, on that one.
Okay.
So, just sign the, make sure it's just the North Row block, which is the bottom block on both of these. And I'll get you the other one.
Just sign right there, you just sign it as the Planning Board member showing authority for that A&amp;R. Some of them are 12-foot. Okay, don't, don't put your pen down there, you've got six.
Actually, and I have, if you could take a copy, if anyone wants it.
So, are they just taking, they're taking one lot and creating two?
They have no extra by far, on the, on the Hayes Memorial one.
Well, you can keep going.
Which, which is one building. They originally had the frontage, it's in Marlboro, so that was originally one lot, and then the North Row piece was a, was a North Row lot. And so, what they're doing is combining the lots.
Oops.
So, which is why both towns will sign it.
Just testing you.
Because it's land in both towns.
So, the frontage is considered Marlboro?
The frontage is Marlboro, yes, and it has a Marlboro address.
Who gets the tax paper now?
We both will.
Oh, okay.
North Row gets the most, but we've got the building.
Just curious.
And then, so there were six sheets in total, okay.
And this particular plan, excuse me, is the, like I said, the one across the street, and this needs the paper, oh, actually, I have, I do have to have those paper copies signed too, Carrie. The, so this is, the Bartlett Street that's under construction is over here, which is 301 Bartlett. This is the FedEx site, and then these are the, excuse me, that's the FedEx site, these are the two properties that are 3, 330 Bartlett Street and 350 Bartlett Street. So, they, and then they've also, there used to be a little snake of a prop, of a parcel that was one foot wide that went all the way out to Lyman, and that's getting incorporated into this plan also. There's the, oh, one foot wide. All right, so the paper copies.
One, one foot?
It used to be, there, but now they're combining it so that it all belongs to
Okay.
Either 330 or 350.
Okay.
I'm not sure who gets it. But it used to be its own separate little, it was a spite strip, as they call them, where all of this land was first subdivided.
Got it, okay. Anybody want to sign this?
Carrie's doing a good job.
So, again.
There you go, just keep signing, and then don't forget to sign all those other paper ones.
Yeah, I'll bring you these too.
And then, did you, did you, you need to put the date on it too, Carrie?
I did, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Keep going, there's usually four or five papers, paper versions.
It's funky paper.
And then this goes back to the Hayes Memorial, I need it designed. So, now there's one, so you've got like 12 sheets, just leave going.
So, that's where it was at?
That's the same one, the, that you just signed, but I just had you sign the Mylars. This is the one that's going to go to Marlboro also, but it's just the paper versions that we distribute in-house.
Okay.
So, yep, so just on the bottom of each page.
Just wondering what you were doing with that.
You want me to turn the pages for you?
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations, you just bought a new house.
Yes.
All those signatures.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, next item on the agenda, continued public hearing for 222 West Main Street Site Plan Approval, Special Permit Common Driveways, Special Permits for Two Family Dwelling Units. The applicant is Abu Construction Engineer, Connorstone Engineering, welcome back.
Thank you.
Good evening.
No, they like it right here, so I think that's probably good.
Yeah, so again.
Right. He usually yells at you when it's in the office. I'm doing okay. That's what I'm waiting for. Thank you, Matt and Karen, I'm Max Holden from Connorstone Engineering, Terry Abu is here as well, he's the owner of the property as well as the applicant. Just as a recap, I don't want to scare anybody, this isn't what we're proposing, this is what was submitted last time, four duplexes off a common driveway that was about 400 feet long with related infrastructure. Based on the comments from the board and the audience at the last meeting, Mr. Abu has revised his development plan, and hoped to be consistent with what everybody was looking for. Orientation, West Main Street is here, Lincoln Street is here. The new proposal is to construct three single-family homes on Lincoln Street with individual driveways, the common driveway has been eliminated. These are A&amp;R lots, which means there's no waiver, there's no special permit, these are by right. The zoning for the single families, 20,000 square feet with 100 feet of frontage, all these have both the requisite area and frontage. So, what we're here to discuss tonight are the two lots on West Main Street. We're still proposing two duplexes, individual driveways coming out onto West Main Street. These lots, again, for duplexes, as you know, it's 30,000 square feet of area and 150 feet of frontage. The area on this lot, the westerlymost lot, is 38,000 square feet, the easterly lot is 37,000 square feet. So, it's almost double what the residential lots are here. So, clearly, we're all set in terms of the area, however, we're deficient in the frontage and the width. The westerly lot is 108 feet, and the easterly lot is 111 feet. A little bit more than last time, but still less than the requisite 150. Utilities for the property, it's proposed to bring sewer through an easement off of Lincoln Street, so it would be town sewer, and water will be provided from West Main Street. The town has no requirement in terms of drainage for this type of development, however, because it's a state highway, we need to get approval from the state, and they're, they're going to be looking for drainage. Tony has had preliminary meetings with them, and we have to submit definitive designs that they can ultimately approve. So, that essentially is what we're looking for, is the waiver on the width and the waiver This is a form of assessment sheet of the area, just to understand the colors, and let me see them. The site, the locus is here, the two lots is shown in yellow. What you see in orange is non-residential uses. Specifically, the nursing home is here, St. Rose Church is here, the post office, and the shopping center is located here. The green that you see are existing duplexes in the area, just so you can see an overview of it, it's kind of collecting zoning or uses in this particular area. When town meeting adopted the regulation, there was a waiver provision, we talked about that at the last meeting, and the criteria that they wanted to be considered, the first one is not to be detrimental to the neighborhood. Going, as you can see, you know, the definition of the neighborhood is certainly subjective. There was a lot of discussion about the houses on Lincoln Street and how it was going to impact those houses. We're going to have a bucket out of three individual houses, residential houses located here, certainly takes the impact away from these houses. The location of the proposed houses will be about 250 feet from the closest house across the street, so clearly, there's a horizontal distance to provide quite a buffer, you know, plus you have the main driveway in between. So, I think in terms of detrimental to the neighborhood, I would suggest that with this new proposal, it shouldn't have any impacts on the neighborhoods. Appropriate to surrounding properties was another one of the criteria. Where we have a lot of non-residential use and residential use here, what we're proposing is kind of a nice transition between residential duplexes business. So, we didn't think it was going to be detrimental, or we don't think it's going to be detrimental to the surrounding properties. And the final criteria was not disturb consistency of the neighborhood. And, again, the consistency of the neighborhood, when we've had duplexes here, then most of the discussion revolved around it's not consistent with the houses on Lincoln Street. Now that we have three houses here, the duplexes are actually abutting of business though, the business zone is already. So, it's kind of a unique property in that it's right on the transition from the RC to the, to the business west. So, it seems like a very appropriate location for duplexes, not to impact the surrounding properties. If you expand the neighborhood definition, you can see the other duplexes that are in the area that would even add to that consistency of, of the area. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tony, he'd like to say a few words.
Good evening. We had Tom Redmond do us a plan for the three houses, and it's, it's really, it's kind of spin-off of the original duplex that we did, same style, I think you all have. This is what, this is what it should look like.
Yeah, I think that we have that, it's part of this.
This is the style that it's coming from.
Okay.
I took, I took his copy, and made a book of it, which is, it's a beautiful house, he did a great job, and he came up with a great floor plan. I think it's going to be, I don't know, I don't think it's going to pop.
Do you need to, do you need to identify the, the true author, so you don't violate that?
So, what we did is we took, took that style and introduced it to, to the duplex that we submitted as option two, which has been learned by change factors. So, we're going to basically take this floor plan, and we're going to, you know, change, change this a bit, the floor plan, but this is what the front elevations are of the duplexes. So, we're tying it with the single-family houses.
So, this, just so it's clear, this is the single family?
It's the single family.
Okay, so these are the three along Lincoln Street that you're proposing would be this one, and then this is the dup, the two duplexes along West Main?
Right.
Okay.
That will look like, actually, we styled it.
Okay.
And I think we're going to probably redo them all in the same color, so it all, it looks like a little community, and with the fencing around the property, we need to set it off.
Right.
It's, it's not going to blend with the older houses, no matter what we do. New houses are pointed, you have a number of styles done over a period of years, probably over 100, just from turn of the century to present, from Lincoln Street. Lincoln Street and that area has really no continuity from, from a design point of view. This will have, this will have continuity like a subdivision.
Okay.
So, and I think it, and it's in a great, great location.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is, is find out if there are any questions or reservations from each of you.
Okay.
My question actually was, do you have a copy of the plans for us? Because we haven't seen these plans yet.
This is, this is all that's been submitted thus far, right?
Right.
This is all that was.
I know, but I think to check the, you know, the.
This?
No.
The site.
The site plan.
On the site plan.
We would never give.
The A&amp;R was approved by the Planning Board back in July of 2017.
Okay, so the frontage in the, is the same?
That was the original live lot.
Mike just said that.
Division of the property.
108 and 111?
Correct.
I'm going to have to talk to Rob about that, because, because I'm going to need a little more than 108, so hopefully.
Well, that's, I mean, it's like someone.
But this is, this is very close to what it will be.
So, the A&amp;R is not exact, but very similar to the.
Yeah, very similar. And it will meet all the criteria that it needs to, as, as does this one.
With the exception of.
Once I change it.
Okay, just with the exception of what you're seeking for waivers?
Sorry?
It meets all the criteria required, except for what you seek for waivers?
Right.
In terms of frontage and, okay.
That frontage.
Yep.
And we, we came up with a range, knowing that if you left it at 150, there'd probably virtually no duplexes. That is the reason. And this, this is a perfect example. It's on Main Street, and the board is a commercial property.
Right.
Not, not a, in my opinion, not, not the best place for a city for a house.
Okay, let me, let me pull through the board, and see how they're feeling about this. So, Amy, aside from the A&amp;R plan question, what other comments or questions do you have at this point?
Well, it's with the waivers, because when it did, the waivers were presented to us this spring, they discussed a lot that could not be developed. So, you gave the example of, next to the clam box, there was a lot, and they put a duplex on it, and it might not have had 150 feet, so that was a perfect example.
Right, right.
And this lot was one house going to five, so to me, it doesn't seem like it fits that criteria, because it's not an unbuiltable lot, it's still going from one to five.
It's not going from one to five, it's five lots.
Well, it could go from one to five, it's actually going from one to.
It was five, it was five A&amp;R lots.
It's actually going one to seven units.
Right.
One unit to seven units, so that's even more than one to five.
There were five lots.
Yep. I guess that's my, that's my issue with the waiver, it is, it's not an unbuiltable lot without the waivers.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments?
Um, not right now.
Michelle?
Okay, so, I chaired the Design Review Committee, we met on Friday, Tony presented to us, Tom was there, the other board members are there as well. We looked at the site plan, we approved the site plan as presented to us, because it, you know, we don't make a decision on variances, but we all seemed to feel like it fit nicely. We saw the project before, where there's a lot of concerns about the density, or how some of the buildings were presented, and we felt that this was a great compromise, or a great working of the lot that was somewhat of a difficult lot to begin with, and we know that they were all split up into five lots. We all approved and thought that the five buildings on it looked good at the various locations. We looked at the designs, we didn't get into too much about the designs, because we, I think the applicant wanted to make sure that before moving forward, that everything was going to be approved, but I think it still has to maybe come back and tweak before the Design Review Committee, some of the other things that we do, but we thought that these single-family houses fit nicely on the corner. It is true, it, Ms. Abu saying it's very hard to sell those houses right on Route 20, so it's an uphill battle with the pricing right there, and he said you were going to start at 700, which is tough being right on Main Street right there.
Actually, prior to yours.
Yeah, so that's going to be tough, but it's a nicely designed looking front house that's right there, and then the duplexes, we, we felt sort of fit in, tied in nicely, because that's what the applicant wants to do. So, we didn't deny it, we, we approved it, we approved it in the sense of the site plan and the buildings that he wanted to plant, put there, but we did say that probably have to come back and fine-tune it, once it got approved, everything got approved. That was it.
Cool, okay. Anything else, any other questions or comments you have?
No.
Based on the plan?
We've been talking about this for a long time, so.
Okay, great. Carrie?
Yes, so, it, I was just looking at the previous image of just the driveways, I just had a question about, maybe that's for you actually, Mike. Oops, there it is, okay. So, I just, they're not connected though in the middle, I just can't see that far, so.
Right here?
Yep.
Correct.
Oh, okay, all right, so it's not like a circle.
On the ground proposal.
Got it, okay. So, it's like a little extra scoop for like snow or something like that?
And the turnout, you know.
Oh, gotcha, yep.
If you're backing out, gives you enough to, to back in here, and then, so you don't back out under West Main.
Okay, so that's, that answered that question, thank you. I had a question about the styles, so these are all, these all look the same, all, all the properties?
They all look similar.
Okay, like painted the same, everything the same?
Yes, right now, the, the, I don't want to make them all white.
Okay, so one thing I was curious about, that we had, I, I've attended a couple of the Design Review Committee meetings, and the consultant, Judy Barrett, had brought up that a lot of the times, the neighbors have an issue when, you know, a set number of houses are brought in, and there's no like variety that kind of mimics the look of the neighborhood, you plunk in these, you know, whatever they are.
This is going to be twenty-four hundred and this will be twenty-eight fifty.
Okay, so each side is, each side?
Twenty-four.
Gotcha. Great, thank you. They, you know, you put in these homes and that it doesn't mimic that same variety. So had suggested as part of the guidelines, that I know haven't been adopted, but the current draft has, just providing architectural variety to sort of alleviate that concern when neighbors see, you know, this giant, I guess, you call it a community, that's just kind of plunked into their neighborhood. And it seemed like there are ways to alleviate that that I don't see replicated here. I'm just wondering the thought process behind that and that, is that something? I know you're also on the design review committee. So is that something that the design review committee no longer agrees with ultimately?
I think what we were talking about, and this is where maybe, like a step two was, you talked about maybe there might be different materials.
Yes.
Materials might differentiate between each one of them.
Right. I might use three or four materials and switch them up between the units so they don't look absolutely identical. They won't look absolutely identical.
Okay.
I won't, you know, I just won't do that. But it's a theme. You know, I want to, I want them all to work together, the whole, the whole. I, I, Tommy, I think it's going to be a good city for that, for that corner. And, you know, that, that corner really could use something very nice there, so...
Okay, and just to clarify, Amy, I know you brought this up. I just want to make sure I understand it properly. So in terms of the waiver piece of it, so I actually attended the public hearings in which the waiver was presented. I think you had presented it and I don't know if it was your lawyer or a lawyer had presented the language for this waiver that ultimately became part of the bylaw. And I did hear the intent behind the waiver and it seemed to be something, Amy, like you were mentioning, where you couldn't develop it or it was like that clam box type thing where it was kind of a weird, unique type shape. So I just want to clarify, in those spots, you could build single homes. It's just...
Yes.
Okay, so it's only in the case of...
Those are already A and R lots for single...
Okay, that makes sense. I understand what you mean now. So that it's really not having the frontage, we're going to make a duplex piece.
What I asked for when we did this, is I asked for, so we moved, negate almost every possibility of thirty thousand square foot lot in our seat, which there aren't many of. The town, the town is pretty well built out. And our, our seat is, is basically a hundred feet plan and twenty thousand square foot lots. So you're not going to find many of these. And this, this, this is a perfect place because it's, it's not, it's not best suited for a single family home.
In your opinion? I, I think the town just came off that moratorium. So I think there wasn't a, you know, there was some sort of movement against the development of duplexes. And in terms of the waiver itself, I think that it was kind of, it was put in at the last minute and, you know, in terms of the actual language of it, you had mentioned criteria, certain criteria for the waiver. I think in terms of consistency and things like that, I'm still not sure consistency Hearing from the neighbors, the last time at our last hearing, there was a lot of neighbors that stood up and had a real problem with the, with the consistency of that right next to their neighborhood. So that's what I'm just trying to think about a little bit. So I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Well, the site itself has, will have tremendous continuity, whereas the neighborhood doesn't. The neighborhood, generally, this section of Lincoln Street, in my opinion, has little or no continuity. Because of the different houses, different sizes and styles, when they were built on a different year, there's no continuity there. This is pure continuity.
But I'm not sure the neighbors want a forced upon continuity that doesn't match what they already live in. That's what I'm just trying to get at there.
Well, I will say this. It's a public hearing and if there are neighbors here, we'll hear from them.
Okay.
They're the ones who should speak to what they want.
Sure.
I, I think, I think the difference on this side, and I certainly understand what you're saying, Karen, but I think the difference on this side, the continuity, this is more of a part of the business section. I don't know what you define as the neighborhood. We thought by putting these three single family houses in, the conversation that we had in the last meeting, this provides consistency. Now you've got a neighborhood here with single family houses. This is more a part of the nursing home, the post office, the church, not really part of the neighborhood on a main, a main road. So I think the definition of neighborhood is certainly subjective, but I've associated it more in this way than with this particular neighborhood here, once we took those duplexes off of Lincoln Street.
Okay, you can say that, but I, they're still home. So I would associate it with the flip side that wasn't highlighted. So you can highlight any portion of this map and say, you know, if it's, if you highlighted the inverse orange, it would look completely, this map is a completely different. I realize you've highlighted the commercial components, but there is a neighborhood there and we had neighbors sitting here from that neighborhood. So, you know, it's just a matter of how you perceive it.
I hear you, but I, I thought it was important to...
Yeah, thank you.
If we're so business, so close to business...
Right.
You know, that there's not too many parts that... Right, that we're talking about, size of the structures. There's, there's, there's no continuity between what we're going to do and across the street, whether it's single family homes or duplexes. The structures, there's no continuity. It's not like we're trying to gel the, and have continuity with the houses across the street. We're not trying to do that. It can't be done unless you're going to build a house like you did sixty or seventy years ago. Nobody's going to do that.
Let's hear from Anthony. Anthony?
So I would like to mirror, I think, some of the comments about, I think the spirit of the waiver was meant for properties that were maybe not usable as such and not necessarily to build a bigger structure.
I wouldn't say, excuse me, but I wouldn't say usable, appropriate. And this is, this is certainly an appropriate location.
And the other thing I'd say is these are essentially forty-eight hundred square foot structures and, which are big and they're going to definitely stand out. The other, you know, the thing that's on my mind is we, you know, we just came out of this town meeting where overwhelmingly people expressed their concerns and voted on this, on the changes.
Excuse me again, but the board decided, I guess, to keep duplexes. So what are we talking about here? I mean, no duplexes?
I think duplexes with specified criteria.
The, well, just to, just to clarify, because we've got to keep this moving forward. We went to town meeting after a one-year moratorium on the issue of duplexes. And what came out of town meeting was that the town people who live here voted to keep duplexes existing and constructed in this town, in certain areas, subject to certain criteria. That's what we have. You can't now tell an applicant who is following the bylaws in all respects, that we know we said that we wanted to have this, but we're not ready to have it yet. This is our bylaw. Duplexes are allowed under the criteria set forth in the bylaw. And that's how we have to look at that. If there are people who live in the neighborhood who don't like this project for whatever reason, they need to come to these meetings and explain that to us. They need to say why and we need to be able to evaluate all that information. But debating about what people wanted as a result of town meeting isn't really relevant because we have a bylaw that we have to follow irrespective of what I or anyone else think about it. This is our charge. So with that in mind, what else do we have for Mr. Abrams?
Can I, can I make a comment about? So one of the things we did talk about was that, and I apologize that we don't have the scale of the site plan, like down there where the drawings are green, but it's, there's like a knoll now that goes up where the red house is. We're going to keep as much of that, am I correct, knoll as possible? So it won't look like as, I agree with you, Anthony. If you saw a five thousand square foot building right on Route 20, right up to the street, you'd be like, whoa, that's massive, right? But it's almost going to be set back behind that knoll. So I think it's going to, from an aesthetic point, going to cut back some of that visual like larger setting, in my thing. And I think, is that correct?
These are, these are approximately, I think we may even take them back a little further, but these are a good hundred feet off the road, hundred and third. And we did, we did two on the way up to Marlborough on the left that are probably forty feet off the road.
Yeah.
That are forty-eight hundred square feet or thereabouts. To, to, to follow up with what Michelle had said, sorry?
Sure, thank you.
Whatever driveway here or driveway here is going to be untouched. This is the slope that if you drive by, this is... Could you move, move, send it back just a little bit? We've got a driveway coming in here, which is actually going to be on this lot with an easement, which would even preserve this more as the elevation increases ten or twelve feet from the street up to the high point, which is in here somewhere. But this will all stay as the currently exists. You'll, you'll barely see the first floor on these sides.
Are you, did you indicate you're also putting fencing up? Or is that only going to be on Lincoln Street?
Yes.
Are you doing fencing?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to put fencing on the whole thing.
Okay, so it'll be on the top of the knoll?
In, it'll be on...
But will it be at the, at the bottom, at the sidewalk level or will it be up at the top of the knoll?
It'll stop, there's some large junipers here. I don't know if we're going to have to keep them because of this driveway. But it will certainly be between these driveways.
Okay.
And another section here and then a couple of sections along. But down at the street level, Tony, not at the... No, no, this will be built around. It'll be up a little bit, so up in here. No, Trey, the, the slope, the slope is only... Yeah, so right at the top of the slope. Right, yeah. Top of the slope.
So at the top of the slope will be the fencing that'll also break up the visual field. Okay.
You, you won't see the, you're going to see maybe the foot of the first floor when you drive by.
Okay. All right. Anthony, anything else?
No.
Okay. Amy?
Yeah, well, my questions were, my first question was going to be about the driveway because it doesn't look like it's on the first lot or the middle lot.
Correct.
Is there an easement for that?
And that's, that's primarily to avoid the steep slope, secondarily to preserve the current look of it.
Now, if the lot line went over to there, would that give the middle lot the frontage that you needed?
No.
And I also had a question about the sidewalk. The last meeting, we had talked about a sidewalk coming down Lincoln to connect it to the light, to the cross. Is that still going to be there?
On the Lincoln Street side?
Probably. I've heard probably before and it never worked out for me.
Depends on who's, depends on who says it, Amy.
It was, it was another person, but it was a probably...
Depends on who says it. On the Lincoln...
I'd take...
Right. I think on the, there's one already existing on West Main Street. So we would just be looking on the Lincoln Street side. Yep.
We need one to come up to the crosswalk for those three offices.
Okay. Okay. How many bedrooms in those, the three single families, do you know?
Uh, there'll be four bedrooms.
Okay, yeah. Definitely want to have sidewalks then.
So there's no way to bring the lot line over to give yourself the room you need?
No, see, Amy, this, this one, this is one of the problems.
I think in the front, just to get the frontage.
This is frontage in the area. This has got twenty thousand square feet. Just got twenty thousand square feet.
Okay.
And I think it's hard as a board too, to make decisions without ever being handed. Like that is from a distance. We're looking at it, but we've never set a...
This, I think the, I think the purpose of Mr. Abrams and others being here tonight is to show us what they're contemplating as the redraft before they invest the resources into the actual...
Oh, I didn't know that. I just thought we were here.
I assume that's the purpose of this, is we're trying to make sure we get it right, that he gets it right before we invest more money into the engineering.
So it's like a preliminary meeting versus a hearing?
Right, well, it's still, no, it's still, it's still a public hearing. We're still on the open application, but I think that we're going to find an amendment come in based on whatever happens here this evening. That's my suspicion. So I will say that I appreciate that you guys took into account all the comments that were provided at the last meeting. I know you weren't able to attend. But I appreciate that you took into account the comments and the concerns that we as a board had and that you considered that and reworked this in this way. I actually like this plan a lot better. In terms of the waiver, I, this week when I heard that you were coming in with a redesigned plan, I put some thought into the purpose of the waiver. And when would a waiver really be a good idea? And so first I thought, well, if we are in a entire neighborhood where every house sits on a hundred and twenty feet of frontage and they're cookie cutter houses, but somebody has one and they want to do a duplex, would we want to give them a waiver from the one hundred and fifty feet of frontage in that so they could put up a duplex in the middle of this cookie cutter neighborhood? And I would say, no, that doesn't work.
I'm not going to agree on doing that.
Yeah, no, so that doesn't work. What, when would this waiver really make sense? And so for me, in my thinking, when you have a situation like you have here, where you've got a lot that's capable of many different things, and this lot really is capable of many different things, but you want to do what's best for the town and the neighborhood that's there, understanding that the developer also needs to make it worth his while to build this project to begin with, because at the end of the day, that's what we're all in it for. For me, these waivers make sense because the, there's no neighbors on either side that are going to be aesthetically offended by this. The Victorian house on the corner and the more recent style homes that trickle down from Lincoln Street on the East Hurley side are far enough away and protected visually by the three family, three individuals, single families you're putting in, that I think that for these two duplexes, it doesn't make sense to, to, to do anything different than what we've done. You're not going to sell single family homes on West Main Street, the driveways on West Main Street. And...
This is a duplex.
It is. And I think that based upon the way that you've projected it and the styles that you've provided us this evening, the blues you've provided this evening, I think that this has the potential of as good as your other fantastic properties, so, if not better. So I, I like this redesign.
Thank you.
And thank you for listening to the neighborhood on that and especially the three single families on the outside. Fred, do you have comments you want to make at this point?
I don't know.
Okay. Does anyone else on the board have comments that they want to make at this point?
No.
I do, actually.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify, the, the bylaw itself has certain frontage that allows for duplexes and that does enable people to, that does allow for duplexes. So I just wanted to, Anthony, I think that's, when you were talking earlier about the bylaw and the waiver, I think that there are cases, and we set frontage and there are valid reasons for setting up this, these frontage requirements. I think what I was trying to say is the waiver came in at the last minute and sort of created a disconnect between what was agreed upon after, I think you, there was a lengthy process in coming up with this frontage. I think this board had worked with a consultant for the better part of a year to come up with this frontage and there were valid reasons for doing so. And the town voted and approved this and, and that's fine. I think, to your point, that's what the town voted on and I think we can all agree with that. But the, the waiver itself, if this doesn't have the frontage, the planning board does not need to approve a waiver as part of the bylaw. The bylaw has these frontage requirements, in my opinion. So I just wanted to state that in terms of adhering to the bylaw.
Okay. So procedurally, what are we doing now?
Well, one of, one of two things. I mean, I think, I think you, or at least I would feel more comfortable if you heard from the applicant that he is not looking to, and I don't, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but that he is possibly not looking to close the public hearing tonight, but is looking to sort of get a straw poll, which you just did, and then come back to the next meeting? Or are you looking to, to close this out tonight? So procedurally, I don't know what the applicant is expecting.
Well, let's, you know what, let's, you guys want to take a minute just to think Well, let's, you know what, let's, you guys want to take a minute just to think about that? Is there anyone in the audience, members of the public, who want to say something? Alright, so we'll start with you, sir, go right ahead.
Mary Scolanti, live on Crestwood Drive, just a couple of comments. As Carrie said, we passed a law, now, I like this better than the first one. I just, I just hope that this is the exception and not the norm going forward. What I heard was this measurable criteria, hundred fifty feet square footage, then I hear it fits the neighborhood, that's in somebody's opinion, it does this and that. I'm not saying this is bad, but I'm saying I hope this isn't setting a precedence, but everybody else is gonna come forward and say, well, you know, it meets the criteria of a nice neighborhood, this and that, but we don't have the hundred fifty feet, then why do we vote the hundred fifty feet, is my question. So this is more, I want to make sure this, well, I don't know how I make sure, but I want to voice my opinion, that this isn't gonna be the norm for the next years. This is more the exception than the norm.
Yeah, I think too.
I understand property, really understand property. I have no problem with this design, I like this better. Now, those houses are a hundred feet back, you say, from the road?
Hundred thirty.
Hundred thirty, and by putting that little jog in the driveway, it kind of makes it look like a wide lot, even though we know it's not, but it looks like a wide lot.
You'll, you'll, from, from across the street, you'd go, there'll be some houses.
Maybe, okay, yeah, okay.
And these lots are, these lots are almost acre.
Yeah, I, I understand that, yeah.
It's, it's really the location.
Yeah.
But that's what we're talking about here.
What I'm more saying is that I hope this is one of the exceptions than a normal thing, that everybody wants to build a duplex, comes in and says, well, you know, I got a hundred and five feet, but it fits the neighborhood, it does, it's not obtrusive, and everything else, oh, by the way.
It's the location.
Yeah, now, I came from neighborhoods where three deckers, they all looked alike. When I moved to Northborough, I liked it when the houses didn't all look alike, so.
These are gonna look alike.
Yeah, okay, that was, that's my comment.
From, from the planning board perspective, we have to take each application individually. You know, so I can't guarantee you that we'll never see another waiver, I also can't guarantee you that we will. You know, it's, it's taken one at a time, but I, I would also say that, you know, when we make determinations on waivers, and we look at things individually, we do have to take those three criteria that Mr. Sullivan described into effect in each individual case. And every neighborhood in Northborough is different, so those evaluations do get done separately.
My point is, there's only two measurable in the bylaw, that's a hundred fifty feet and a square footage, if I remember right. The other is kind of a arbitrary, that any building can say, well, it does this, it does this, it does this. The measurable ones are the hundred fifty feet and, that is now the square feet, those are the measurable ones.
Is there one? Right. Okay, thank you, thanks, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm in a butter to the property, I reside at two thirteen West Main Street.
We just need you to say your name.
Oh, sorry, Sarah Richardson, two thirteen West.
Sarah, where were you living?
Two thirteen, so, if you don't mind, pull up the picture. So here, I'm right here, this is me.
Okay.
So, as far as a few comments about not detrimental to the neighborhood, and not detrimental to those that live in the neighborhood, first of all, I disagree with the fact, you're gonna be putting two mammoth duplexes directly across from three houses, which are a part of our neighborhood. They may kind of stick out into your business district, but they're still part of our neighborhood. Those of us that live in this little corner of West Main Street that abuts the business district. Second of all, based upon these plans, I see that the changes were made, that the three single family homes are gonna have individual driveways onto Lincoln Street. However, there is gonna be two driveways coming out onto West Main Street, pretty much directly slightly to the left of my property. I don't know if you've driven down West Main Street?
I lived there.
Okay, well, sometimes it takes a good twenty minutes to get out of the driveway.
I realize that.
If you're putting in two duplexes, that's a potential for at least, at least four more cars just on West Main Street, entering and exiting that intersection.
How many cars go through there?
I, 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 I understand that, but that doesn't mean that by putting more, let me finish, please. That doesn't mean by putting all that potential more into that intersection, which that intersection right now is a hazard to begin with. By adding people who live in that area.
I agree.
To have to pull out on that road, that is going to add to additional problems in that intersection.
So, well, hold on, I just want to interrupt for one second on that. So Ms. Richardson, I would say that Mr. Abu was in touch with DOT regarding that intersection, about the installation of a permanent light there, rather than the blinking light that currently exists. And the letter that we received, a copy of, that came back from DOT, indicated that the current proposal that he has in place for this particular lot, the development of this lot, does not trigger the installation of a full signal yet at that intersection. So they're saying it's not busy enough yet, and I'm not saying that it's not busy, I know it's busy, I use this intersection every day, multiple times a day, and I get it. But, you know, we, we, we have to work within certain confines, unfortunately.
We all agree with that.
Yeah, there's no disagreement on the traffic issue.
I, I do have two additional points. Unfortunately, this is the first meeting I've attended, the meetings I've been able to attend, you asked for a continuance. I've worked at night, so I wasn't able. As far as my, one of my concerns is, I am a single mother, and I have a fifteen hundred square foot home that sits on slightly over a half an acre of land. You're gonna put these duplexes here, which are four bedrooms, twenty eight hundred square feet.
They're three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms, twenty eight hundred square feet.
Twenty four.
Twenty four hundred square feet, that's, that's not the point, it's gonna be, half of that duplex is going to make my little house, which I work two jobs to pay the mortgage for, look like a shack. Because it's going to tower now over my property. So the fact, if you're gonna put houses, and the single family homes that are gonna go onto Lincoln Street, I heard you say they're gonna be upwards of seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's going to affect the property taxes of the homeowners that currently live in this neighborhood.
How, how does that work?
Well, it's going to, it's gonna, by putting those houses in, it's gonna change the property value of our house.
It raises the value of your house.
Probably not, compared to if you've got my little litty bitty house compared to your twenty four hundred square foot duplex. My house, chances are, is going to be worth less in that neighborhood.
It's not gonna have any.
Okay, and the, the third piece that I have is, we're putting in town, there are seven duplexes going out next to the place, two duplexes here, three single family homes. So what's next, at the town meeting, we're gonna have to vote to build a new middle school, we're gonna have to vote to.
You're gonna, you're gonna tell me?
What, Lincoln?
The population, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Population's going down. If anything, by the looks of the census, you're gonna have problems keeping the schools full.
Oh, I, I.
Oh, yeah?
I disagree, my son's a senior at Old Godmont, and that school was.
What did, what did you say?
Let me finish, that school was rebuilt, I don't know, ten years ago, around there. They did a whole rebuild on that high school, and the high school is already pretty much to capacity. The middle school now, for each grade, where it used to be two classes, normal classroom size, you've got three and four homerooms down, or grades, and you've got class sizes of forty kids per class.
And these two duplexes are gonna be a problem.
Correct, because you're putting more people in, we've got, we've got seven duplexes going in town, I mean, what's, what's next? I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for building the town out, I'm all for increasing revenue, but I just think.
The building that's going on in this town is very small, very, very small.
The building, I, I, I happen to disagree, especially growing up in this town, the buildings, yeah, it's not.
It's very small.
Okay, I, I, I gotta, we gotta, we gotta put this back on track, okay, let's put this back on track, but hold on, I want, hold, hold on, hold on, just one second. Where are the seven duplexes?
Right, now we're just wondering, what?
What do you do?
They're right next to, they're right on West Main Street, almost, it's where the sign shop used to be, almost directly across from.
What, what is, what's going in there?
I'm guessing that that's eighty nine West Main Street, and it's on seven duplexes, it's one building with seven units.
Is that gonna be a, an apartment building, or is it, it'd be, okay.
Residential on the first floor, residential units on the top, there's seven individual units in one building.
Okay, okay, so not, not seven duplexes.
Sorry, I missed, I misspoke, seven townhouses.
Okay, okay, 'cause I think we were all wondering what you, what you were referring to, 'cause that never came to us, so.
So we're, we're six months out from the town meeting, and you have two duplexes before you.
In, in one application.
Can I respond to some of those?
Uh, yes, you can.
Is there time? In, in terms of the increase in population, you're only talking, there's two bedrooms. There are four bedrooms in the single family, and you've got three bedrooms in the duplexes, so three, three, six versus four, so there's only two versions. It's miniscule. You're not gonna have a major influx of, of kids in the school system.
But if you have, but if you have, sure, I, I apologize.
No, no, no problem, I do know that. As far as the traffic goes, you've got nineteen thousand trips a day at that point. On each one of these units, it's gonna be ten a day. When you do a traffic study, you compare the new to existing, and it's a drop in the ocean. So, I mean, as far as the traffic and additional people that are going to be involved with this, it's negligible. Additionally, which house is your on?
I'm right here, this is me. So I look, I pull out of my driveway, and this is Lincoln here, which the traffic is backed up here, buses cannot get out, it's.
I, I live in town, and I, I get it, I get it. You're gonna be over five hundred feet from your house to their house, you're indicated that you're gonna be looking out, and it's gonna dwarf your house.
Well, no, you come out, and here's my driveway, the minute I pull out of my driveway, I'm, there's the, here's the property, here's the original driveway, here's the original farmhouse.
No, I, I understand where everything is, but you're gonna be so far away, that it's not gonna have any impact on dwarfing your house.
I'll still be able to see it.
Well, you, you, you can't, you can't, you can't avoid the visuality of any development in town. You drive by, Diane, down any road, you're gonna see what gets built there, so, okay.
That was a little sarcastic comment on my point, my part, and, and I apologize.
What, any, any other comments on this?
I don't think so, at this point.
Thank you, thank you for giving us your feedback.
For the location.
Thank you for your feedback on that. Any other members of the public want to speak to this? Yes, ma'am?
And I don't know if this is the meeting to ask this question.
So tell us your name and address first.
Johnson, twenty eighth and Street.
Okay.
Drainage, I'm just a little bit worried about that, 'cause I am right, not in the drains, or smack in front of my house, and they don't really accommodate what's there already.
Okay.
I know there's more pavement, and I didn't know if there would be a drain, maybe an additional drain somewhere to pick up any slack.
There's, it's, it's not required.
For the, for the single family homes, there's no drainage proposed. Under, if you have subdivision, you have to mitigate that, it's a small event, and there's a very extensive study. Individual lots are exempt from that, so there'll be no drainage proposed for these lots.
Won't impact me anymore.
I mean, I can flood it out already as it is, there's no, doesn't seem to be any solution to the problem.
I think you need to speak with Mr. Abu.
All right. I don't know if it's this, or directly to, if there's a problem, I'm coming to you then.
Any other members of the public want to speak to this proposal? Yes, Mr. Reed?
Tom Reed, in Seven Sunset Drive. So the question, to waiver or not to waiver? The spirit of the change was to give some flexibility to designers and developers while proposing duplexes, where you have complicated sites, topography, context. And when you have a site that is adjacent to the business west, as well as an established residential, it's in an area that warrants a waiver consideration. The fact that it can offer some kind of buffering between single family and commercial property is a condition where you should consider a waiver. The fact that you can put some new construction, then, in my humble opinion, is an improvement by quality design. Offers another situation where you should consider a waiver. So, clearly I have a history with this, 'cause a previous client had hired me to design the duplexes of the original proposal, so I state that for the public record. So I'm definitely in favor of Mr. Abu's proposal. The other question was whether a variety on this site is appropriate. And if you look at some of the established neighborhoods in Northborough, like on School Street, where you've got a series of four squares that were built in the nineteen twenties, beautiful homes, they establish the character. They're the same footprint, they have a lot of similar architectural details, and that really anchors that neighborhood. I think Mr. Abu has the potential to do something similar, where you can do something of this time, in this period, with similar designs, and very compatible, that can stand apart and, and be special, so that's my comment for variety.
And that's a good point, because those houses on Summer Street that you refer to have each on their own become unique, despite their similarity in design, which does break up the continuity a bit, and the monotony of, or what could be monotony, so. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Kathy, what did you say we should do next?
Well, again, I, I don't, I don't know what the, the direction of the applicant is, I mean, it's really up to the applicant. If he, if he is looking for, you know, closure tonight, I mean, he can request, you don't have to agree with it, but he can request that, you know, he consider the application and, and vote on it tonight, if you feel that you have all the information. If you don't feel you have all, you know, the, enough information, or you still have some outstanding questions, then you would continue the hearing. But we would, we would need to know, you know, what those outstanding, you know, what information that you're looking for.
Let's see what Mr. Abu wants us to do first. Mr. Abu, what would you like us to do tonight?
Well, I think it's really up to the five more, more questions, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, and I'd like to answer. If you've got all the information, I guess we can take a vote. Are there more questions, and do you need more time?
Let me, let me find out.
Well, I can't vote on the whole application until I get a copy of the site plan. Like, I could vote probably on the waiver, because the waiver is just on the frontage that he's asking for, but as for voting on a site plan that I haven't had in front of me, I mean, a, a special permit, 'cause our original application was for common driveways and four duplexes, and we've never had a precedent that we're gonna vote on an application where we don't have the site plan, nor the amended application. So I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on the application and the special permits.
So maybe we should vote on the waiver?
So why don't we do a straw poll on the waiver, that way you're not looking at a final vote at this point, and you can get the feel of the board at that point. So, Amy, waiver, yes, no?
Can you vote on each waiver individually for each lot? And that's a question, right, so you can vote yes on one, no on another, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do, but I just.
So, hold on, if you want to do it that way, let's make it clear what you're voting on.
I know, I know.
And Kathy, for your purposes, we've got two lots, one with a waiver on each, so it'll be the east lot and the west lot. We don't have numbers on those lots, right?
I don't, no, they haven't been assigned, I don't have a number setting yet.
No.
Okay, so the east lot abuts the, the three, uh, single families, and the west lot abuts the business, so what say you on each?
My hardest time with it is, because it is going from one house to five houses, I didn't, I don't feel like it is appropriate for a waiver.
Either of them?
No, I don't think so.
Michelle?
Um, I approve.
Okay, Carrie?
Uh, wait, wait, let me just catch up, right, so Amy, you, you're, this is a straw poll.
Right, I just feel it's setting precedents.
Maybe you're saying no, no to each waiver, Michelle, you said yes to each waiver?
Yes.
Okay.
Carrie?
So, thank you.
I appreciate all the thought and time that went into this, I still believe there are valid reasons for the frontage, and in this case, I'm not in favor of the waiver.
For either lot?
For either lot.
Anthony?
I am not in favor of a waiver for either lot.
I would approve the waivers for both lots, so that's where you're at. So, with that in mind, what would you like us to do?
I guess, um, we could extend it, and then I could.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Is, is there anything, other than eliminate the duplexes, is there anything that we can do on our end that would make the mayes be more comfortable with approving the duplexes? Whether it be screening, landscaping, location, size, is there anything, or are you just? Whether it be screening, landscaping, location, size, is there anything or are you just adamantly opposed to the duplexes, uh, as proposed?
Okay, I think that's a fair question. Anthony?
Um, I think, I think the, the lot width is certainly a concern for me and the size of the structures. I can't, I can't comment on changes that would, you could bring forth that would make me change my mind at this point.
Carrie?
Um. Could you remind me what's the, hold on, I have it right here. One oh eight and one eleven?
Yes.
And one fifty isn't normal. I mean, it's not even really that close that I've, you know, I, I kind of agree with what Anthony's saying that size wise, it just doesn't have that frontage that I think this board spent a lot of time working with a consultant to figure out what made sense for the town. And, um, I, I think it was commented here, why did we bother to vote this frontage if we were just going to provide this sort of, um.
It wasn't, it wasn't the one. It's because, it's because of the location, Carrie.
Yeah. No, I hear you, I hear you.
The location is appropriate and that's what this was all about.
Yeah.
So that a lot like this would, you wouldn't have to pass it by.
Yeah.
So it's, I, I don't know what you're afraid of moving forward. If, if this is appropriate, you find something that's not appropriate, obviously you're going to, you're going to turn it down. I, I would too. On the committee on line, I'll turn it down too. This is appropriate. That's what this is all about. Are these appropriate or aren't they?
The other thing is, there are also long narrow lots, which is, I think, why you're limited.
I, I would think that the hundred and fifty feet, the primary purpose of the hundred and fifty feet is to provide a buffer from existing houses and separate it out. If you look at the abutters in this case, the abut to the right of the, the easterly duplex of the three single family houses that he's going to have to try and sell. So that, if it's going to impact anybody negatively, it's going to be totally. The one to the left abuts business zone. So in terms of providing a hundred and fifty feet to protect the abutters, I'm not sure that's really important in this particular case. We felt it was better to make the lots, I mean, we could have given more land to the twenty thousand square foot lots, but we thought it would be more appropriate and more acceptable to this board if we maximized it and almost gave it an acre. We thought that was more critical in this particular instance.
No, I hear what you're saying. I do, for sure. I just, um.
It's about the appropriateness.
Yeah.
That's what this is about. And you can, you can use the waiver as, as an excuse not to approve this, but it, it's not right. It's not right.
Well, I think that, um, the, the bylaw itself asked for that. This is a waiver that allows for tweaks here and there and, um, I, I would say.
Why are we turning it down? Just because it's not a hundred and fifty?
Well, right, that's what the bylaw, we may or may not approve.
No reason, no reason.
Well, I think that the board worked with a consultant for a long time to come up with this frontage for valid reasons, um, and, and that's, that's where, that's where I'm at.
Separation. You have the separation.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
I think part of it too is slowing the growth of duplexes because in lot sizes where we're getting bigger, it was slowing a little bit of the growth. But I'd almost, with that first lot, because I was asking about the two waivers, if they could be approved separately. The first lot on the east, did we say, or the west? The west?
The east is the one next to the three new single families. The west is next to businesses.
I'm thinking of the west that's near the businesses. I mean, we talk about the master plan, about variety of housing and, and senior housing. So I might be more apt to approve one waiver on the left that abuts commercial if it was made for like senior housing, because that's something that's missing, senior affordable housing. And if it filled a need, it might, I might be okay, but if it's not filling a need that we currently have in the town.
The need, the need it fills, these are less expensive than a normal house.
How much are they going to be each?
Probably a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand less than the house. But that gives somebody an opportunity to come to town and buy a brand new house for much less money.
And how much is that? Like.
Oh, five fifty.
So there'd be five fifty each side? But there are, there are houses all over town in like Juneboro, India, Maryland. They're all under five fifty.
This is very new. This is very new.
Right, right. Okay. I just, I just, I'm on the master plan and I hear all the time about the need for affordable senior housing and I'm not sure if this would fill that need. And that's, that would, you know, when we learn about making exceptions, sometimes an exception can be made if you're filling a need and the need.
This, this provides a need and it's another house.
But senior affordable housing?
It's more house, no, it's, it's more housing for, for someone.
Right. I guess, I don't know, that was the number one need that I was hearing is the senior affordable housing.
So the, so the question, I think that's before you, Amy, is there anything that the applicant can do at this point to this plan to, um, cause you to switch in the other direction?
That was my thing. If it was designated as senior affordable housing, then I might consider it because.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's it. Okay.
Senior affordable housing?
I, I don't know, um, I, you can certainly, you have to work with the Northborough Housing Authority to do affordable housing or unless you're doing a forty B project.
Well, Kathy probably works with affordable housing and how to designate it.
It's at the applicant, the developer's discretion to do that.
Right.
And sometimes it just doesn't make sense.
I know, but yeah, so.
Yes, Mr. Reardon?
Could I make a, a comment about, um, Carrie's interpretation of the waiver? I was involved in those same meetings with Judy Barrett. In the context of why they increased it from a hundred and twenty to one fifty was the scale, the concern of the scale duplexes in an established residential neighborhood being too large. So they wanted to add width to the lot. I mean, there's nothing magical about one fifty. It could have been one thirty-five, it could have been one seventy. It was a ballpark to add some width to help a larger structure not dominate abutting structures. But then if you take that as the general context and you apply it to a specific site like this where you don't have those issues of, of duplex dominating neighborhood buildings, that's where you have the opening to give the waiver. Because the spirit of it is to protect what's already there. And I think fetishizing one fifty as a number takes you in the wrong direction. It's not, just because it's in the bylaw doesn't mean all times it must be applied. You have to have some flexibility. And respecting the context is what I believe overrides the importance of one fifty.
Yeah, it seems to me that if ever there was a perfect, not that anything could really be perfect, but if ever there was as close to perfect an application for this particular waiver, this would be it. Because you're not affecting any existing neighbors by doing this. There's no one literally right next door that's going to, um, step forward and say, I am right next door and you can't put this right on top of me. I'm always going to be living in the shadow of this house. You don't have that here. Um, you know, the hundred and fifty feet, as I said almost an hour ago, um, hundred and fifty feet is designed for the smaller neighborhoods like on Ruth Road down in, um, the Northgate neighborhood where you have all these small, um, single family homes, you know, starter home, what we sometimes refer to as starter homes, um, and then taking one of those lots that might be a hundred and twenty feet in frontage and trying to dump a duplex in the middle there. And that doesn't make sense. Like, that's when somebody might come and say, I want a waiver so I can do this. And you would say, well, that doesn't make any sense at all. Now you're going to have this giant two or three story mammoth home next to a ranch or a small cape in a neighborhood full of ranches and small capes. We don't have that problem here. And this particular situation, it's not, that, that scenario doesn't apply. Um, and so for me, when I think about the purpose of this waiver, this is where, this is one of the cases where it would apply. I unfortunately think that part of the problem, Mr. Abou, is that you're the first one to ask for it. And you come in with the first application for a duplex. And you're asking for a waiver. I, I, you very well may be right.
I think that's where it's going.
You very well may be correct. Uh, you know, it is, um, I understand your concern about this because the town did approve duplexes. We did approve the waiver procedure. We did approve this board to have the authority to do that.
And it offers more housing.
And here we are.
With the population going down, this is, this is good. And they're, they're new efficient homes and more affordable than a single family.
Right.
I have a question because you were talking about who it would affect. And one thing that I don't know because I don't have a copy of the site plan, is there, does, there is a minimum distance between residential and commercial. Does that duplex actually meet the minimum to the commercial? More in line for the person who's going to live in that house versus the people who are already there in the commercial?
Would you side yard setback on the western one?
Yeah, the side is more to the side.
Well, the side setback, but what about to commercial? Isn't there a larger distance between commercial and residential?
There's a buffer. Setback? No.
Setbacks just go to the.
It's just the, um.
It's the reverse.
The buffer.
Landscaping.
Yeah. Do we meet the buffer though between commercial and residential?
This applicant doesn't have to meet that buffer. The commercial side does.
Correct.
Right, but I'm looking out for the person who's moving in. Does it meet the buffer if it had to?
The commercial, the commercial development wouldn't be there if they didn't have the buffer in place.
He, I, I think at the, um, if, if I'm not mistaken, at the last hearing you talked about, um, the existing trees that are, that are along the, um, I'm so, uh, Beaumont.
Beaumont's driveway.
Along the Beaumont driveway, that's where we're all staying. No, no property, no.
No, I believe those are on his property.
Oh, on his property, okay.
On his property. And you have the driveway giving parking lots, you have to go to the same building. So I, I believe the.
I just wanted to check because we don't have a copy of the site plan and the setbacks. That it, it was my question.
And that's, that's why this is appropriate. His next door neighbor is the church.
Right.
But we should be reasonable.
Anything else? No? Anything else on this end? Nope, nobody wants to change their mind? Okay. You, would you like us to continue this or would you like us to vote on this? Do you want to take a few minutes to think about it? Okay.
I would entertain a vote to approve the, uh, hold on, what are we approving? A vote to approve the, um, special, well, we don't have special permit common driveway. It would just be the special permit for the two family dwelling units and the waiver for each of the two lots. Okay. Is there a motion to approve? It's just a motion to approve. You're not saying you're approving it. You're just making a motion.
Making a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
I, I second the motion for discussion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Okay, so the motion is, I, I mean, Elaine's going to catch this on, on tape, but I just want to make sure if she looks for my notes. So the motion is to approve the special permit, um, for both duplexes and the waivers for both duplexes.
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, the two family dwelling units.
Okay. Any further, any further discussion? It's been seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? Anthony?
No.
Carrie?
Thank you.
Amy?
Should we discuss why we're voting or you, we get that from before?
No, I think, I think that's pretty clear.
Okay. And I do want to say, I mean, I do appreciate all the work you put into it and the, and the houses look really nice, but I do think it, it sets a precedent.
Michelle, any further discussion?
Just, just to clarify that, that I'm not saying to change your voting, but it, but it doesn't set a precedent. You know, court sets a precedent. The, the each special permit and each variance, I mean, the ZBAs does variance, each, each case is looked at on its own. So you don't, you know, whether, whether or not you voted variance, that doesn't mean you have to vote them for next. And same thing with special permits, so.
But your reason is because it sets a precedent.
Well, I mean, I have a lot of different reasons. It does.
The reason is because, because it sets a precedent.
That's not my only reason.
Could we have the other reasons?
The reason is, I don't feel it, it disturbs the consistency of the neighborhood. I don't think it fits in the neighborhood. And it could be a traffic because now you're going from two house lots to four units. So that adds extra traffic to the main street, West Main Street. In the original application, we talked about a common driveway because they talked about the, um, traffic on West Main Street. So now we're going into.
You realize the traffic we're talking about?
I understand. I understand.
You realize that?
I understand, but I was part of the meeting and when we talked about the waiver at the very beginning of the year, it was discussed that a waiver, there is really no precedence on how you say yes or no to a waiver. And that was a difficult thing about the waiver. We knew it was going to get to this point and here we are on the first application. And Judy Barrett actually talked about it at design review, saying, how the heck did that happen? I would never have done that. We did spend, um, a year with a consultant coming up with ideas and just one fifty isn't a bad setback. It's two fifty in Westborough.
We don't live in Westborough.
I know, I understand, but we have one fifty.
So, Michelle? Yes, no? And are you voting in favor of this motion or against it?
Oh, so is that a vote for me?
That was a no.
It's a no.
It was a no for me.
Yes.
Yes, in favor. Carrie?
No, okay, no.
Voting no? And your reason for that?
Uh, similar, just echoing what Amy had to say.
Anthony?
It's a no.
Okay. Same reason?
Yes, I just, I don't think it's appropriate, um, with the slot size, the width, um, and just the look and the feel of the neighborhood.
And I'm voting yes because I think that this is exactly the right application for this type of a waiver. So it is three no's and two yeses. Thank you. Thank you for the changes and the effort that you've put into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion fails and then, um, you're welcome. You can close the public hearing.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. But, here we go. All right, so next, we've already taken care of the minutes and we've already taken care of the A and Rs. We don't have any lot releases or bonds, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, let's talk a minute about zoning articles. So Kathy, tell me about the ZBA's, uh, input on what they think about a change to, what was it, non-conforming uses?
So, sure. Um, so I had talked about it with the zoning order appeals at their, um, October meeting and then I, I, I talked to them about, um, all of the three or four articles that Amy was, has been talking about and then about, um, the, the electronic messaging, excuse me, message boards. And then Anthony's suggestions about, um, the external legal sign. And then November, um, I, between meetings, asked them to take a look at particularly the non-conforming language because primarily that was affecting them the most. And, um, and you had asked for their input, Theresa, after the, at the last meeting. So, um, we reviewed it again with the zoning order appeals at their, uh, meeting last week, a week before, whenever it was. And, um, so they didn't take a straw poll or anything. Um, and they seem, um, uh, they, they want me to come back with some language um, to, to take a look at. Um, there was one member who, um, was opposed to any changes, um, to it and, you know, and stated that outright. Um, and the, the rest of the members, like I said, they didn't do a straw poll.
Okay.
They, um, so that's.
So you'll put some language together for their next meeting?
So what, so what I told them was that I would, um, I didn't get a lot of direction from the meeting.
So you didn't get a thumbs up or thumbs down? You got a, let's see what it looks like?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, so what, so what I'm going to do, um, I told them I would take a look at, um, uh, um, you know, again, just, you know, take, take a look at state statute, you know, take a look at our zoning by law, what I'll do, I mean, in fact, myself, what I always do with any, you know, when we're talking about amendments. Look through just historically whether, you know, we as a town have tried, you know, changing the language before. Um, again, just to give us a historical perspective. And then, um, you know, talk to town council also.
Okay. And when is the next ZBA meeting?
Their next meeting is no, uh, excuse me, January twenty-second. Um, they don't meet in December because it's always ballsy at Christmas.
Okay.
So actually Christmases would be their meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah, so for January twenty-second and I'll, I'll have, you know, I'll have a draft of something, um, to, I mean, I'll also, you know, provide it to this board too.
Kathy, the draft is for what exactly? I mean, it was for the, um, the lights that Amy.
No, this is non-conforming use.
Okay. And isn't the other stuff, okay. Isn't the other stuff, okay.
What the one member mentioned that was for it, is the one person was leave it the same, and there was one person who was interested in change. And one problem she had with the language was, the original one I had, she had changed from one nonconforming use to another less detrimental, and she thought maybe add similar or less detrimental. So, you can keep going with the grandfathered use, but then move towards nonconform, I mean, move for, towards conforming. So, instead of allowing it to grow, you can either stay the same or conform. And her point for that, as a member of the ZBA, was it's hard to say no if you allow a change or substantial extension of the use. So, for her to vote no, it's harder. So, this gives her the choice of voting yes or voting no. And the other person who was against it just said it was fine the way it is, and.
I'm sorry, I don't really understand that comment. Did she not have a choice of voting yes or no without that language?
That was her input, is that she would vote yes with a little bit of input on the language change.
Oh, yes to the amendment to zone.
Yes to the amendment.
Not to any particular application that might be before her.
No, no, there's no application before her.
Sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying.
Okay, yes to the amendment, but with a little bit of change. And what I thought was important too, was, um, Bob Federighio was there, and he explained that with this nonconforming, this is just making a change to nonconforming uses in the way of the languages. It would not change anything with dimensional, with houses. And, um, because he said, the majority of nonconforming applications they get come from the North Gate area, about people wanting to add a deck or adding lawn, and this change that I was suggesting didn't have anything to do with those applications. It wouldn't, it wouldn't affect anything residential. It's only, has to do with the use.
Okay.
So, any use that is now nonconforming would either have to stay the same or conform. It would be anything in that business use, so it's, it's not saying you can't do other things. It would just have to be something that would conform with the zoning bylaw. Where ours is different than some of the other towns, we allow a change or substantial extension of use. So, that gives someone who comes in free rein to pick, okay, well, I want to do this. You know, it's not even allowed in that district, but since I'm nonconforming, I can do an ex, a substantial extension of the use, so let me try this. I'm not saying it's right or it's wrong, but I think it leaves the town open to more lawsuits, because if you say no, it gives them more reason to grow it. I mean, it gives more chance for a lawsuit, and I feel like the, I read the state statute of nonconforming.
More chance for a lawsuit?
Right, because if you say no, and they say, well, define substantially detrimental. And we went to a class with Judy Barrett last week, and she said, in one of my notes, it says, "You want to have a definition in your bylaws for substantially detrimental, because detrimental is such a, it's different to everybody." And she said it's important to have that defined in your bylaw. And she also, I'm moving on to the village bylaws, she said it's important to, um, look at nonconforming if you're trying to fix your downtown, because if you put in all these bylaws to try to get your downtown to change and be what you want it to be, but you allow a nonconforming use to grow, or you allow a use variance, you're probably never going to get what you want, because you're leaving the avenue open for somebody to ask for something that you don't want. And I actually brought, um, a copy of the zoning center bylaws, and I can pass it out to everybody. But the nonconforming use and the use variance were both discussed during this meeting.
So, you're going to put some language together and get it to ZBA for the January meeting?
Um, I do have my original.
Yeah, that I've been.
And actually Carrie and Anthony have one, so I didn't have to, I just didn't have to make them a copy, I guess.
Do you guys have one?
Because they were at the meeting with me.
Okay. Um, since we can't, um, since we can't really do much else on that. What else do we have for bylaw amendments, Kathy?
Um, one of the other things that, um, that you have talked about is, um, the, again, the electronic message boards.
Right, right.
And, um, and I think that, again, sort of the straw poll, you know, that you all agreed that, that you want something in the bylaw about electronic message boards.
Though, I still do like them.
Well, but you're not, you're, you, uh.
I'm going to miss my weather channel there.
Yeah, um, so we regulate that.
It's going up, it's going up by, uh.
The, the United States Supreme Court says, we cannot regulate that. Um, so, so again, what I got from you, from the last meeting, was that you all would like to see, um, the definite, uh, more of the definition, um, of, for electronic message boards, you know, what else we have to tweak in the sign bylaw about that, and then also to allow them in the, um, I don't have all my notes with me, um, tonight, but, um, uh, I think you, you picked highway business, Route nine, and ha, Business South, which is Lawrence Street.
Yep.
And industrial. Those, I think those are the three, um, zones that you, you know, it's a.
No, I'm just thinking of Lawrence Street, is, are we talking like Wegmans?
Lor, no, Lawrence and, Lawrence and Otis, um, are what called, um, uh, Business South.
Okay.
Um, which, uh, which, uh, Walmart, I think Walmart's in Highway Business.
Yeah.
But there's some businesses that, like, all along Old Street.
Like the old Bertucci corporate building?
Yeah, the old Bertucci, yeah.
And the mosquito control place.
So, I, I think you, but again, but again, that's a simple, you know, um, I can just, you know, check the box or uncheck the box on that. So, that's where I was going with that, and you'll have, I know I said I would have draft language today, but, um, I don't. Um, but, uh, Bob and I have been working on that.
So, I thought we did industrial and highway business, although I'm not necessarily opposed to Business South. Maybe I just need to put it in context a little bit.
No, so maybe, so, again, maybe we didn't say, maybe we didn't say Business South, and it was just Highway Business and Industrial.
Is that at the last meeting?
Yeah, it's in the minutes.
Yeah, I think it was.
I was going to say.
Oh, okay, well, I'll send that out.
Right.
I read it today.
And while we're looking that up, just a question for you, when you mentioned about the, you can't dictate what's said. I think we do have in our bylaws that you can only have business-related content. Can we at least say that? Like, we can't say whether you put the weather, or, you know, vote one way or the other, but can we at least say business, or that's it?
I think that, I think there might be something already that, there's, there might be something already.
No, I think there is, but that's okay, right, to have that.
Yeah, well, we can, but it's, I know there's been some, I mean, we've kind of joked about it, you know, whether you want the smiley face, you know, sun on there, with the temperature and all the time and things. Um, but that, that's the type of thing, you, you can't, you can't regulate that.
But if we say business only, do we need to stick to that? So, then someone says, wow, so-and-so gets to put the weather up, why can't I put, you know?
Um, the, I, I can get, um, I mean, eventually town council is going to do all of this, but there's this, there's, there's this Supreme Court case, um, Gilbert versus, doesn't matter what it is, we can know it.
Ah, that's funny.
But there's a Supreme Court case that, um, that a lot of towns, I mean, it was sent to, to everyone by, by our, you know, legal council. Um, and that, that the, that it's, it's so strict what you, what you can't tell people.
I know it's.
Yeah.
So, but can you, can you have criteria or rules around the makeup and the type of signs?
The, like, what, what we have in, in our, um, in our bylaw, it's just on the basic requirements, you know, talks about the signs advertise, um, call attention, um, indicate, you know, who's occupying the premise, um, advertise the property, you know, that, I mean, it's, it's, you have to be there, um, because you run into, um, you know, First, First Amendment?
First Amendment, First Amendment.
First Amendment, um, rights, um, as far as to get that free speech about telling someone what they can or can't put on a sign. Like, there used to be a sign, like, I'll just give you this, an example. A former town administrator, I, I, I don't know, you know, it, it's irrelevant, but there was a residential, um, property that had an issue with a former town administrator, and he put a sign on his property all the time, um, in this town, uh, against the town administrator. And there was nothing that could be done about that.
No, but I'm just saying the type of sign, right? So, you can put different things, the content of the signs is up for that, but in terms of whether it's a backlit or frontlit, a, a LED flashing sign, you know what I'm saying? Can you set the criteria for what is allowed and not allowed?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, I was not understanding, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so I, I should have just said that, the content. Um, so that's, uh, so that will be taken care of.
And it is just industrial and highway business?
And highway business.
Not Business Souths?
Yes, yeah, so, um, uh, and then, the, um, uh, a real easy one, that, you know, again, I've, um, I, I talked about this last time, Bob and I are just putting something together about seasonal sales, um, which really relates to Christmas trees and Christmas trees. Um, but it, it's not anything that this board would ever get, you know, he, he wouldn't be involved in it. It's just something for the building department, but, I mean, it's just something we don't have in our bylaw, and it comes up every year, and we're kind of just, you know, sure, you can sell Christmas trees, but, um, but we really should have just some language about that. So, if that's, you know, it's the least of your concerns, but.
Can you email us a copy though, because I'd be curious? Just read it.
We haven't written it yet, but.
We'll see, we'll see it.
But yeah, it has to come to you.
Oh, okay, I thought you were saying that it was a general bylaw.
You have to, you have to send a report to town meeting, I mean, it's a zoning bylaw.
Okay, I thought.
But I just mean, you know, I don't think any of you are sitting home, and maybe you are, but probably not.
Selling my trees.
And then, um, the other one that, um, uh, it, one of the, the ones that Amy had brought up, was the hazardous waste, um, facility, and that is proving to be, um, very complicated. And so, my recommendation is, is that it's not, it, it's not something that's going to get the research and the involvement from other boards and departments that it needs in order to get to town meeting. Um, the, um, I've been speaking to a lot of communities about whether they have a bylaw or not, and how it came to be. And, um, most often it came to be because there was a use that, um, uh, um, like, uh, uh, like, uh, um, a transfer station, um, because it all falls under, there's different chapters in Massachusetts, but it's all under D E P, the Wasting Management. There's hazardous waste, and then there's solid waste. And so, um, the, and, and I think I, I had mentioned before that, you know, I needed to get the Board of Health involved, and also, um, the Fire Department. And so, I've talked with the town administrator, and it's just, it's just a bigger, um, it's not as simply as just putting a hand in the bylaw, in the use table that says hazardous waste, you know, if you want it or not. Um, we have to look at all the ramifications of it. Um, there's a separation, which I'm just getting into, that, um, the, there, there's a separation between medical waste and hazardous waste, and then there's a separation of, um, uh, uh, you know, does a store selling paint, you know, does that, could, could that get caught into hazardous waste facility site? And, and you don't want that to be swallowed into that, because, you know, that's, that's not the point of, of this. So, so it's just, it's becoming, I, I mean, it's, it's becoming evident that it's a lot more involved. It's not, it's just not a simple bylaw.
Okay, so, is it, is it your recommendation that we not try and rush something through for 2019 spring, town meeting, but rather take the time and the resources to develop a bylaw? Because my concern always when we try to do something quickly is that it gets to town meeting, and we get unanimously voted down, and told, go back and think harder about this. And I just want to make sure that this board is okay with the idea that we're working on this, but it's not as simple as perhaps we thought that it was, because of the multitude of facets involved.
And one of the things that, that, um, that we have to do, and it's, and it's, um, but, but first, I, first, we have to develop criteria if we are going to pursue a bylaw. And, and it's, and the result, the, the result of talking with DEP, um, it may not necessarily be that, that we need a bylaw, because our existing bylaws, our existing site plan bylaw, and our existing aquifer protection bylaw, which a lot of towns rely on, instead of having a hazardous waste bylaw, they rely on their aquifer protection bylaw, which we have in place. Um, so, we also need to take a look at that, as to whether or not our groundwater bylaw, um, could, you know, could, could be enough, or does that have to be, you know, should, should we be, be making that up? But we also need to do an analysis of, once we set, if we proceed with this, looking at the criteria, we then have to take a look at, well, are there any sites that could potentially meet your criteria? Um, and this goes back to, you know, we did it for the marijuana, um, I did it years ago for, you know, adult entertainment, because if you're going to put it in your bylaw and give it a home, then you have to give it a home. You know, there have, there has to be land that, um, that it could locate on. So, and then, just as we had done with all of our business zoning, um, that, that we had made changes to, where we went from like three business districts to about six business districts. Um, you know, we held public forums with all of the business owners and the residents, because there's certain residences that, um, that, that are located in our business districts and in our industrial districts. So, you know, we need to get all those folks involved too. So, it's just a little more complicated.
Okay.
So, that is my recommendation, that to you.
I, I just have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So, hazardous waste is currently not in our bylaws at all, is that right?
Well, as, as a specific.
But like a section?
In the use table, is there, there's nothing that says hazardous waste?
Oh, okay, but, but my question was going to be, you know, is there any, are, are there any conditions we can put in the interim? So, what, things that concern me are things, you know, if a hazardous waste facility can buy, can they go an industrial by right? Is that?
No, no, the, and the way, the way the DEP explained it to me too, um, and also, um, I've been speaking with a woman who had, who, um, served for sixteen years on the, um, hazardous waste facility board or something. It was a statewide, um, it was, actually goes back to Romney, Governor Romney. Um, but anyways, um, the, the, their, the consensus from the folks that I've been speaking to so far is, um, that the, um, the Board of Health is really where this should rest, not with the planning board. Um, and, and in the state law, right now, today, it's with the Board of Health. So, if someone, if some facility decided that they, they wanted to choose Northboro, they first have to go to DEP, and, you know, DEP does some initial site assignment work. They then have to come to the Board of Health to determine, to talk to the Board of Health, and then to determine if there's even a site that would work in the community. And so, that's where you have to look at, some of the things you have to look at is, um, uh, you know, um, amount of impurbius, not impurbius coverage, but, um, upland on the site, you have to look at flood plain, I mean, everything that goes into developing any site in town, that, that any developer has to go through. But, um, but DEP has this citing criteria that they develop for local boards of health to, to make an assessment about whether this project should even get a site assignment. And then, if it were to receive site assignment, then it goes through your site plan, you know, review process.
So, Kathy, if that's the case, I'm wondering if we should maybe, um, make inquiry of the Board of Health as to their perception regarding a potential bylaw in this regard?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I've, I've initially, you know, reached out to the, um, to the, uh, Health Director here in town, and, um, and he was going to talk to his board, and I, and I, I don't know if they even meet monthly. I think it's just, it's, you know, when they have public hearings, they meet, but they need months like that.
They have a monthly meeting schedule, but they only meet when somebody needs something that the director can't.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know if, if he has, has had a meeting within the past month when I asked him about it.
Right, I'd be interested to know.
But it is something that we would certainly loop them in, and also the fire.
Yeah. Because, again, as with the nonconforming use issue, where they are the first stop on, on the line for these types of applications, we really should get, gauge them in terms of what they think about, us make, creating a bylaw for them to live by. You know, and that's, I, I think that we should obtain that answer from them.
But the, the question I was going to ask related to that is just, so, industrial abuts the high school. So, in the interim, do we need to protect ourselves, like, nothing could come within a certain amount of, you know, within a certain number of miles of the high school? Or are we all, are we covered with our current, whatever exists now?
I mean, just my initial conversations with, with DEP is that, um, is that, you know, they're like, you're so far ahead of other towns, because you have your groundwater protection bylaw. Um, you, a, a, and there is the DEP citing procedures. Again, I'm not, you know, it's, it's not my area, it's, I mean, I'm learning more about it every day, but, um, but it's, it is, it's just, it's a, it's a big subject, and it, and. And, and I don't think it's anything that you want to, um, um, you know, not, not thoroughly explore. And then, you know, again, including, you know, these other departments and boards that, that right now have the authority to review them.
Okay.
When I did research on the hazardous waste too, um, it did talk about the state has to do the site assignment and then the Board of Health, but the, but when they do the site assignment in the Board of Health, then it stated it could only be cited where it was allowed in the use table. So, you know, if we don't have a site designated in the use table, could they pick something other industrial? I thought when I read the state on hazardous waste, that by right, they can go in industrial, and then you can add extra criteria to it, so that's what I was.
Yeah, and you, you know, you, the town, you may not even want them in the industrial district.
Right, but you have to put it somewhere.
Our industrial zoning district is, um, is very much a business park in this town.
Right.
You know, we have very limited, um, what you would call a true industrial development, you know? The, uh, so, so that's something else that you, you know, you can't just assume that, that industrial is where you want it.
Right, but you wouldn't want it in commercial either, or residential.
I have, I have no idea, I, I, I'm just saying that, you know, and you have residences in, in the industrial district too, so I mean, you have to take all that into consideration, or I think we would want to take that.
I just have one quick question, and I don't even know if this was, um, came from the planning board or if this goes through the Board of Selectmen for, but I remember last year there was on the ballot, I mean, on town meeting, but it was actually withdrawn about, um, the plastic bags. Are they going to do that this year or not?
Oh, yeah, the, was it high schoolers that put that together? Yes, they are.
Because I heard the city of Boston is actually doing it as well, and I thought if the city of Boston could do it more, it would too.
Well, um.
You don't seem too happy about it.
Personally, I think it's a good idea, I don't, I think, I think it should be considered. I think the town meeting should get a chance to discuss it and vote on it. What the town, last year there was a proposal from a resident, a young resident, and it was worded in such a way that it couldn't be approved, but it came in at such a late time it had to be included on the warrant and then was passed over. The resolution was that we would work on a bylaw and bring it forward in the proper format for the town meeting to discuss at next year's meeting. In the interim, we were hoping that the state would take it up and ban it statewide, uh, or at least put in some regulations that would be applicable across the Commonwealth. And they, the governor rejected that portion of the bill that went through earlier this year, so each town has left to deal with it on their own, and many towns of ours have already banned plastic bags.
And that's, these are just plastic bags that retail sale?
Yes, and, and that's the tricky part, is that some of the, some of the bylaws just regulate all, by all stores, and some put in some provisions for smaller stores to be, to still allow them, like small mall and pop stores that have a square footage of less than seven thousand square feet or something like that, where it might be cost prohibitive. There are, there's research being done.
So we're not going to have an issue with town trash bags?
No.
Okay, okay, that's always, it's always a concern.
We can't tab favor town trash bags.
We sure can.
We both live in Shoesbury, which has plastic bag bins and weird plastic bags.
Okay, all right, all right, good.
How was the transition for Shoesbury? Was it, how was the transition for Shoesbury?
Oh, I.
Did you even, did you even notice it? You probably didn't even notice it.
The only thing that's weird is when you go to Home Depot, to me.
Oh, because they put them in the brown paper bags?
Everything gets put in brown bags, yeah.
Yeah, and the, and the, the brown, again, I'm just, I, I digress, but the brown paper bags are not what they used to be. Before there was a plastic bin, you know, you would get a plast, the brown paper bag at a grocery store, it was nice and thick. You know, you go to Home Depot and be carrying, you know, three smokes detectors.
They're just encouraging you to bring your own, your own bags.
Yes, exactly.
They want you to bring your own bag.
Even Stop and Shop, every time I take my bags out of the car, they rip and everything goes down the driveway.
Yes.
And then what?
Can't tell you how many women's bags.
Do Shoesbury, um, take into consideration the small, you know, businesses to allow?
I don't know, uh, Fred might be more familiar, I don't.
I don't think you worry him.
I always say that, it, it was a woman in my neighborhood that ran the campaign, I should just ask her, but.
Just curious.
I don't know, I don't know who's got, if there's exceptions, I think there are exceptions.
Yeah.
Like, the gas stations, I don't know.
I find myself, in order to avoid carrying these big paper bags carrying a lot of things, can you do it?
That helps too.
If I can't carry it, I'll put it on a bag.
I keep forgetting my reusable bags, so I keep buying more, and I'm like, now into the plastic bags, I've got a million reusable bags.
Yeah, no, I do too.
Well, thank you for letting me know that, because, yeah, I was curious.
So those were, those were the three main takeaways that I had. And Anthony, I know you, you know, you talked about the external lit signs, but I, I didn't get the sense that we were doing a bylaw about that for this year.
So I still want to pursue the, and then, if we can, the electronic signs, and I don't know how you, how you classify them or identify them with a definition, but we know, you know what I'm talking about, right? And that's what I would like to go after for this year.
Is electronic message boards, yeah, yeah. Yep, okay, so that's what, that's what I thought.
And, uh, you know, to Anthony's thing, and what we've talked about before is talk about how we can put in that illumination issue. Can we talk about?
Yes, yeah, there, I mean, what, what, yeah, yes, that's lumens per square foot per square meter.
That's actually what the, um, the building inspector suggested.
Brightness.
Yeah, what we're going to do is we're going to make reference to how I have it drafted right now, is we're, is we're making, because it's, because, you know, it, it's a way to do it so that you don't have to chase it every year if it changes, you'll reference the, the standard from, there's the American Sign Council, and I forgot what the other one is. But those are the, those are the two, there's two big sign, I don't know, um.
Standards.
Stand, yeah, that, um, that everyone uses. And, um, and so some towns just reference it, and then other towns, you know, actually write it out, the ones that have dealt with electronic message boards. So Bob and I are thinking what we're just going to do is propose making a reference to it. So that way, when it changes the zoning automatically, you know, you don't have to change it in the zoning.
Okay, um, yeah.
I have another one, um, I have another.
Hold on.
Okay.
Is this a new potential zoning?
It is, and it's very small, but major, but small wording. And it's very important though, because we've gone to a lot of classes, discussed it with a lot of people. And our special permit, and under the criteria, it says, unless otherwise specified herein, special permit shall be granted by the Special Permit Granting Authority. Our old bylaw used to say may, every town I've found has said may or shall not, unless it's written determination that the adverse effects will not outweigh the beneficial impacts. But ours is like one of the only bylaws where it says a special permit shall be granted. And when you read like about the special permit, they can be denied, but having shall here may make it harder, may not make it harder, but I couldn't find a bylaw in another town where they actually said shall. In our, on our town website, if you go under the planning board and read about special permits, it still says may. And, um, but in our book it says shall, and I really think the shall should be may.
So when we just took a vote on two twenty-two West Main Street, and you voted against the special permit for the duplexes, as did Carrie and Anthony, you violated that bylaw?
No, because you can, unless we don't, unless I don't feel that it's determination that the adverse effects will not outweigh the benefits. So I did feel the adverse effects of that outweighed the beneficial impacts.
So you do have the discretion to say no?
It's harder, I think it should be may, I can't find another town where it says shall.
Well, well, hold on, because if we're going to amend the bylaw, I want to make sure that I understand what we're doing.
Okay.
You just said that our bylaw mandates, by use of the word shall, that we have to approve special permits, but then you just voted, three of us voted against a special permit tonight, so did,
Right.
did three of us violate our own bylaw setting us up for an appeal?
Could have, but it says shall.
Okay.
Unless upon it's written determination that the adverse effects of the proposed will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. But I think with our decision tonight, if the waiver was no, you couldn't, you couldn't approve the special permit. We, we said no to the waiver first, which how could you say yes to the special permit if they don't have the frontage?
One of the, if, if I can, you know, I, I've said this to you all before when we started the, the master plan process. I just think, I just really want to caution you, in, when you're in the middle of a master plan process, that I really want to caution you about doing any zoning changes. The, you know, is the master plan going to come out and say it should be may or it should be shall? No, it's not going to get into the nitty gritty of that. But what you're going to get out of the master plan, just as we did out of the community development plan, you're going, you're going to say, you know what, it's, we, we need to set up a zoning, um, well, either a zoning subcommittee, which is what we did before, because it'll be over ten years that we've done a thorough overview of the zoning. It's just really, I, I find it professionally, it's really hard to do it piecemeal, when, uh, uh, and it's great to go to these classes, and I mean, I used to teach a lot of these classes, you know, when, when, when we first started CPCC. And it's, and it's all very valid information, but I think you got to do it in the context of, you know, you're creating, you know, you're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars creating this master plan, involving a lot of people in this master plan process. And I would think then, I would advise you that you then take the master plan, and like I said, you either do, you could do both, but, you know, you either do as an implementation committee, which is something that is going to be recommended in the master plan, we wrote that in the RFP, and/or you also do a zoning subcommittee. And then, and you go through the zoning, page by page by page, of what should be fixed, what shouldn't be fixed, what, what, oh geez, I thought we did that five years ago. You get into things like this about, you know, the whole philosophy between special permits and waivers, you know, should they be there, should they not be there? But you, you're doing it in a particular context. And I just think, when you're in the middle of a master plan, you shouldn't, you really shouldn't be doing a lot of change. I, I, I would say you don't do any changes to your zoning bylaw, but.
How many of our special permit decisions have been appealed? Let's say in the last five years.
Oh, in the last five years? No.
Like last ten years?
Uh, no. Well, right, but I mean, it's still the same criteria, you know? Oh, um.
For, yeah, the issue by this board.
Oh, so specifically by this board, um, I, I, I don't think there's.
I've been on the board for.
I have to say about Stop and Shop, whether, what, what happened with Stop and Shop, but I, I think that was just a site plan and not a special permit. Right, but, uh, she's asking if there was any.
An appeal from a decision either way.
So I don't think.
I've been on the board for four years, nothing's been denied, so it probably wouldn't be appealed.
But, but here's the thing, Amy.
Yep.
You're bringing forward on December four, another zoning bylaw.
Okay, just one word change.
I get it, but it's another zoning bylaw amendment in the middle.
And that's why it came up, because everybody keeps saying what a big word it is.
I'm sorry, I had the middle of my sentence interrupted the beginning of yours. You're bringing forward on December four, another bylaw change, for this board to consider, for changing the wording on how we review, um, special permit decisions. In the last ten years, we've had perhaps one appeal, and tonight, you and two other board members denied special permits. So I don't know that we have the necessity to move forward with yet another bylaw change, especially in the middle of all the other stuff that this board has to do for the, for the master plan. So I would just ask that you think about this before we do anything else on it, and make sure this is what you really want to do, because I guarantee you, you're not going to get the support of a hundred percent of this board.
That's fine.
Your best case scenario was eighty.
That's fine. I just wanted to run it past the, um, Z B A, because we could talk about it next year.
Well, this doesn't affect the Z B A, does it?
Well, it's special permits.
Does it, will it affect the Z B A?
Yeah, because the special permit section is just special permits in general, so, you know.
Then why don't we ask the Z B A how they feel about special permits, and whether they think they need a change in their bylaw as well?
Sit down.
All right.
And while we're doing it, just give a call.
I have two other items, um, that we need to take care of tonight. Number one, we have a board meeting on twelve twenty, for the sole purpose of which is to bring in Fran Backstrom and Rick Leaf to talk about the master plan, of which, one, two, three, four members of this board regularly attend those meetings. They are also going to be in front of the Board of Selectmen for the exact same purpose on Monday, the seventeenth. So we're going to cancel the twentieth, and if anybody's inclined and feels like they need to hear what they have to say, my suggestion is you attend the selectmen's meeting on the seventeenth. We otherwise don't have a need for the meeting on the twentieth. With respect to an email that I received earlier this week from John Kader, I think it's important, Kathy, that you just let us as a board know that if we want to tap into the external resources available to us, how do we go about doing that without stepping on the wrong toes?
Well, I think in, um, in relation to, to that particular email, he was directing, um, any questions about the master plan to go through the master plan, um, channels. You know, which would be the, the chair and the vice chair of that. I would, I would suggest, um, you know, if any board member, you know, has any, um, you know, questions that either, I, I just think it should probably, it should, it should go through an open public meeting.
Requesting use of the resources.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of how I've always.
Okay.
You know.
So.
I don't want to say direct to people, but, you know, any, uh, whether, whether it was, whether it was central mass, whether it was like outreach to, um, because this has happened in the past too, where sometimes an individual will just take it upon themselves like to outreach to a consultant that, that the board has engaged, you know? So I mean, it's a question that should always be asked of the board, you know, saying, you know, I as a member have this question, I'd like to go to the consultant, or, you know, is it appropriate for me to go to the consultant?
And then normally would we task you with, with doing that, or arranging whatever needs to be arranged from that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, I mean, you could do it that way, or you could do it, you know, the board could send a letter, or.
Right. It's, I, I just want to say it's a learning process, because there's so much to know about procedure in town government. And I just want to make sure that we, that this board, because I only care about this board, this board's doing things the right way every time, um, so that we don't accidentally step in front of somebody we shouldn't be stepping in front of, in terms of accessing our resources. So if there's something that you want or need outside of the planning board or outside of the planning department, then let's bring it into our next public meeting and make sure we just ask for it in the appropriate channels. Okay, anything else?
Yes, I actually had things that were, um, not addressed as part of the town, the town meeting agenda items that we've had before.
Okay.
For zoning?
Well, just, just the bylaw, the, the amendments to, we had the D R C piece about terms.
Oh, term limits.
Yep, so even not limits, just like regular terms, like do you want to say one, two, three, whatever, like reappointment at certain periods of time.
I can't remember how we left that.
And, um, you know, what do you, um, Carrie, I'm sorry, I, you know, I, I took language, I found language that, um, just about, about, um, I mean, it's just standard language, but. And I, um, so I have it, actually.
Okay.
I can, I can put it in a, in an email to you or a memo or whatever, I haven't written up as a zoning bylaw yet, but I found language just about how to stagger, you know, to, to create terms and then stagger terms, I mean, again, it's a couple sentences.
Right, right, it doesn't have to be extensive.
I found it, I, I, um, so I did forget to mention that.
Could I just, um, comment, um, because Carrie, I thought that was actually a good comment about how we're going to do with the terms on the, first of all, in design review, we've had so many pockets of vacancy. It's scary that actually we have interest now, um, but just being on it for so long, there's been so much. But I do like, and I don't know how the other board members feel, is that if someone's up, you know, you're up in two thousand twenty, right? That doesn't mean that you get to stay on, that it's you and then anybody else in the community who's a great architect or a great landscaper, a great person with quarter nine, or whatever the criteria we're looking for, always has the opportunity, then they both submit their reason for wanting to say, be on the board, and then I guess this board decides. I think, I think that's fear, I think that's when you're starting to generate, you know, new people coming and going off the board, and I don't have a problem with that, I know that's not a normal practice, Kathy, that the town uses now, but.
That's correct.
Um, but I don't have a problem with that practice, I actually think that's a good, healthy way of, especially if the person's a great advocate to stay on the design review committee. to stay on the design review committee or any other committee, that's a great argument to keep somebody on. Whereas the other person might say, you know, you know, this other person's just as equal, or, I don't know. I don't necessarily think you have to stick with the old way, but I think that's an opportunity. Maybe this is, maybe the design review committee is an opportunity for the town to look at and say, hey, it worked for the design review committee. You know, we, we were out looking for a person from corridor nine, nobody came forward, so the same person stayed on it. Or we were out looking for a person from corridor nine and five people came forward. Do you know what I mean?
Right.
You're just not gonna know unless you ask.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad way of proceeding either. I would certainly, if you, are you able to send, it's not inappropriate for you to send that language to all of us?
Uh, oh, no, I can.
Okay, yeah, why don't we do that when you have a chance to put it together?
You know, and, and then, actually, and this, if I can just piggyback sort of on that, um, the, how, how it works so that no one's in violation of the open meeting law, is I can send you all, as a staffed person, I can send you all information. What we can't have is discussions online, you know, you, you, outside of a, outside of a meeting. So, um, just to remind everyone of that. So, you know, you can send back questions to me, um, and I can then bring the answers back, you know, at a meeting. Um, but, um, sometimes, I mean, and I'm guilty of it too, sometimes you just get carried away, like, oh, it'll take me two seconds to answer this. And I was like, oh, wait a minute, okay, we, we might've just, you know, stepped into it a little, because, you know, we're talking about something that really should be, you know, part of a, of the public hearing process of just a private meeting.
Right.
So we can ask you basically almost any question, you just can't answer it unless it's in a public forum?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So, I mean, you can certainly send me, you know, questions by email.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and if it's not in violation of open meeting law, I mean, I can certainly answer the, you know.
Okay.
Can you send me another copy of the application? Sure, that type of thing, but to get into any discussion. But, so as far as this language, um, again, which I did, um, I, I did prepare, I, I just looked at my folders and I didn't bring it. But I do have it about for the design review committee, so.
Thank you. The other thing was, um, we had talked about, uh, uh, we, I think we decided the last meeting, there was no time for this. But we talked about actually having some sort of joint meeting with ZBA to look at that special permit language. And I, and I think when I read in the minutes, we were gonna ask ZBA what they thought about that, but I don't think.
I didn't.
We didn't, we did. So what is the best way to proceed? Like, even if it's just an educational thing, or whether we look at special permit together, is there any opportunity for us to? Do we ever normally get together with ZBA in any capacity to kinda?
We don't even have the same Christmas party.
Well, that's too bad.
Nope.
Well, um, I don't know, I, I mean, I, I wanna say, um.
We did it when we did the zoning a lot. We, when we did the.
Since, we've been met with ZBA since I've been on the board. The only board we met with was the Board of Health.
The Board of Health, when we were talking about, um.
Marijuana.
Farmyard animals, uh, yeah, home, home yard.
So it's not, it's not that, um, no, we, we absolutely can do that. And that, and that is something, you know, this board wants to pursue that, and I, and, you know, now that you said that, Carrie, I, I can now remember that, you know, I was supposed to ask the ZBA, and I will ask them.
That's okay, I forgot too. But then, to Amy, so what Amy was saying before, like, maybe the, um, planning board hasn't had a problem with shall versus may, but maybe the ZBA would say, hey, yeah, that's been a really source of contention for us. We always argue over that word. Or, you know, just to bring everyone to the table and kind of, so that, and I think you're sensitive to making decisions for other boards. And if we could just come together.
Yep, and we, and like I said, there is money in the budget, and if we wanted to do one of these joint, you know, trainings, you know, CPCC has, you know, they'll come to, um, individual towns also. Um, and I just think, you know, there's more bait for your bucket if it's a subject that, you know, that at least another board, you know, might be interested in. So, um, and certainly you, you, you're more aligned with the zoning board than any other board. But, um, yeah, we, so we can definitely, you know, if, if there's, if there's a module, and I can get to all the modules, the list of all the modules. Um, I mean, if there's one in particular, two in particular, whatever, you know, that you wanna pursue. And, and then, you know, does it make sense to, I mean, I think it does make sense to have the, the other board involved.
Then the, um, final thing was just, uh, we had previously, before the hearing, had talked about dealing with waivers and then talked about waiting till after the hearing so that we weren't really, um, discussing it with an open hearing that had waivers involved. Do we wanna think about that, or, I mean, is this gonna be a problem for us where I, you know, I feel like, I feel badly to waste people's money and have them go through this big production and then have it not come to fruition? So is there anything, do we need to reevaluate that as a piece?
Are you talking about that specific waiver?
The waiver, correct.
Well, the question I think everybody needs to answer is, are you gonna deny it every single time?
Right.
If you're gonna deny it every single time, then we should revisit it. But if you're not, if you think that there's any possibility that you might allow it once, then you should keep it.
The only, the, the problem I, I see with that is, I, well, maybe even, as time goes on, it'll change. But I think that every developer, when faced with a situation where they might be able to, to do a duplex and it's in their, in their wheelhouse, and they think they can go for the waiver, they're going to do it. And it's, that burns a ton of cycles on their part and on the town's part, and that's where I, I feel that we've got kind of a problem.
It just puts such a gray wedge in there, that I wonder.
And Judy Barrett did speak up at the design review committee meeting, asking why we even bother putting it in.
But, you know, I, I just think you have to be, you know, I'm a disciple of, you know, Judy Barrett's planning practices. And I always, I, I have been for a long time, and I've learned, I mean, Judy's a mentor to me. Um, but, you know, I, I also think you, you know, you have to look at your town individually, you know? Uh, and I think to echo what you just said, Theresa, if, I mean, there's a lot of waivers in the zoning bylaw, and some of them have never been exercised. You know, a developer just hasn't, or an applicant has not needed to. But we put them in there because it gives you whippooroo, you know, gives the boards whippooroo, that if it, um, and sometimes a developer, you know, might not even ask for it, you know, it, it gives the board the ability to say, oh, you know what? Yeah, you know, you're, you're, you're providing, excuse me, um, you know, X, Y, Z, and we, we really don't think you need all of that. You know, it just doesn't make sense for the area that you're in or the project that you're working on or something. I can't give you a concrete example, but again, there's waivers throughout the zoning bylaw. Um, so, I, you know, it's, you know your individual towns, you know? Um, I mean, you, you, your, your town, not a floral. So I just think that you have to, um, you know, yes, Judy has, you know, has made that comment at the design review committee. Um, but, but she also wasn't at the hearings where, where it was discussed, you know, where you made your decision, so. But I also agree that, you know, in this is, this is, this is something that, that, that any zoning consultant will say to any town. You know, if you have no intention of granting something, you know, e- even if it's a special permit, if you have no intention of granting that special permit, then don't put it in the zone, just say what you, that, that's all an applicant wants.
Right.
Is they wanna be able to pick up the, the bylaw, and, okay, this is, this is what this town does or does not want.
That's why I think Judy made that comment about, well, why did you put it in? 'Cause she, I think, sensed the conflict and said, you know, why did you even bother putting it in then? And so I think that's where, why she made that comment at that meeting, 'cause she, she sensed it, she's been walking it through with us. And she was said the exact same thing that you just said, you know, make it black and white, you know, you know, but.
I think if there wasn't a waiver, if the developer really wanted, they could go for variance, right, for frontage? So it.
Yeah, but I mean, you don't, you know, you don't.
I'm not saying it's gonna shut them off completely.
Right, you don't wanna, you don't wanna, um, appearance, like say what you mean, you know?
I'm not. Yep.
So you don't wanna, you don't wanna have the zoning bylaw, or, or you don't wanna, you leave a message that, well, if you don't, you don't like it, just go for variance.
It's just kicking the can.
Yeah.
It's all you do. You're just giving somebody else the job.
You know, and then a variance is a higher test to meet than a special permit.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I think a variance you need hardship. So if there truly was a hardship, then they would get the hundred and fifty feet, which I think is the proper way of doing it.
If, if you, if you want it to be a hardship, a waiver isn't a hardship, a special permit isn't a hardship.
Oh, I know, right.
You know, a variance is, you know, there's three criteria that you, you know, you know, you have to meet one of three. Um, but, you know, not with a special permit or a waiver, so, so again, it's just all, it's not that it's a right or wrong, it's just say what you mean.
Well, he talked about all this criteria we had to meet, but there's, is there a, like, there's regulations for special permits and how you have to meet criteria. There's regulations for variances in how you meet criteria. Are there really regulations on how you meet criteria for waivers? I thought when we discussed back.
No, not for waivers, no.
Right, so, but he kind of.
That's why it's a waiver.
Right, but he kind of stated today, you have to meet this, this, and this, but that's not true.
Well, it's because our bylaw in the waivers, for this specific waiver, we say we can grant the waiver if the following three are satisfied.
Right.
And so we actually define that as part of the waiver.
Exactly.
That's why he went through it.
We have huge language in that waiver, and, and I think in this particular case, I, you know, it's a discretion of the board, but, you know, he felt that he met the, that criteria, you know, and, and he felt that he did, so.
I don't know how comfortable I feel about going back to town meeting so quickly, you know, just passing it and then going right back and saying, now I changed my mind. I'd like to at least let another year pass by and just see what others would get. That's what I'd like to do. Just sort of let it sit and test and test the waters. That's just my comment about that.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anything?
No.
Anything? No? Motion to adjourn?
Uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting, and I wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas.
You Merry Christmas to you.
Happy New Year.
Yay. All right, we're adjourned.
Yep.
Thank you, David.